Good evening. Welcome to the zoning board of appeals public hearing for January 13th, 2020. If you have a cellphone, please place it on vibrate to turn it off. If you wish to speak amongst yourselves regarding your petition, please take it outside for decorum of the of the public hearing. If you wish to speak in favor or in opposition or for any petition this evening, please approach the lectern and sign in, state your name on the public record. For a matter of public notice, we are a quorum of four tonight. So in order to move forward in a positive vote, you have to have a 4-0 or your 3-1 would be fatal. So this may be an opportunity for petitioners to decide after their petition has been heard whether they want to move forward or seek a continuance and we will accommodate. That being said, we're going to move forward under continued business. We have none under new business for 2020. ZB 2020 dash two is special permit Hazelwood Hopkins at 1212 Westford Street, section 6.3.4. McGovern Ford is seeking special permit approval to install internally illuminated channel letter sign for the car dealership at Westford Street. The proposed sign would be 101 square feet and we replace the existing one. The property is in the regional retail zoning district and the sign requires special permit approval under section 6.3.4 and for any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Heather Dudko, 27, Old Meeting House Road in Auburn, Mass., representing National Sign, the sign installer for the Ford dealership. The petition before the board tonight is to simply it's a simply a name change to the dealership, changing from Drumhill to McGovern, and they'd like to remove the Drumhill blue channel letters on the front elevation at 107 square foot and replace at 101 square foot blue channel letters to read McGovern. No other no other changes to any of the signage except those letter sets. And I understand that we're before the board tonight due to a stipulation in the special permit from 2001 that mandated that we come back before the board for any sign changes.
Thank you. We appreciate your reference in that for the public record.
Thank you.
Let that be stated. Any other comments at this time? That being said, I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition. In opposition. That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor. In favor. That portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board. Van?
To you, Mr. Chairman. I see no major changes. It's just essentially an update or update to the sign. So I have no issues concerned. So I wish you the best of luck, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van. Dennis?
To you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions. I didn't see anything listing the illumination source. Is it LED or is it fluorescent?
Let me just double check that.
Please tell me it's LED.
I'm sure it is. Oh, you're right. It will be LED.
Great. And I love the fact that it went down in size.
It did. Yep.
That's great. Win-win. Okay.
Thank you.
Beautiful job. Looks like it'll be even better than before, so.
It'll look nice there.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Sean?
To you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question. You know what the hours of illumination are?
I have the hours of operation.
Okay.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Friday and Saturday, 9:00 to 6:00, and Sunday, 12:00 to 5:00.
12:00 to 5:00 p.m.?
Correct.
Okay. So I usually stipulate an hour after close.
Yep.
Illuminated illumination is off, so probably adding that as condition. But other than that, yeah, it means going down in size. It's it's going to fit in with the neighborhood and I wish you the best of luck. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that being said, there's only one stipulation will be the hours of illumination. It'll be one hour before sunrise and one hour after sunset. It's going seasonal with that, so you don't lose your
That's great.
daylight saving time in other words. Any other comments?
Nope. We agree to that.
That being said, we have a motion.
One quick. So Fran or Chris or to you Christine. So there was a prior stipulation on that, that all matters had to come, all changes have to come. Do we have to vacate? Do we have to make a no condition to vacate that? Or is that not going forward with any other further condition? No further?
Want to get rid of the?
Yeah. Yeah. I just want to make sure they don't have to come back.
Maybe make it a condition just a note for the record.
Okay. So, all right. Well, to you, Mr. Chairman. I can make a motion on ZB 2020 dash two for 112 Westford Street for a special permit under section 6.3.4 to install internally illuminated channel letter sign with the condition that the hours of illumination would be one hour before sunrise and to one hour after sunset. And the condition that the previous condition that all changes to the sign must come before the board be vacated.
Move a second.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Roll call.
Chairman Perrin?
Approval condition.
Member Pack?
Approve the condition.
Member Callahan?
Approve the condition.
Member McCarthy?
Approve the condition.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Best of luck over there.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Moving forward under new business, ZB 2020 dash three variances for Jennifer Sargent at 70 Fox Street, section 5.1. Jennifer Sargent has applied for variance approval to build a single-family home in a vacant lot at 70 Fox Street. The property is located in suburban single-family SSF zoning district. 70 Fox Street requires variance approval under section 5.1 to encroach on a minimum lot size, a minimum frontage, and for any other relief required of the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, sir. My name is David Crispin. I'm a civil engineer and a land surveyor with the BSC Group out of Boston. I've been engaged to assist this young couple with this process this evening. Just for the record, we were not the surveyor that prepared the plan, who unfortunately is in Florida, I understand. So we're standing in here and probably carrying on the rest of the project. But the applicant Jen and Joe Sargent are sitting over here. Joe's father and mother are sitting in the back, who are the butters. And Russ Booser is the builder, sitting right here. I did put a little about six or seven slides together. Hopefully, we can get them up on the screen. And I can walk you through this hopefully in a couple of minutes. Do you need to sit there to advance that or can you? Oh, okay. Just click it. Okay. Anyway, just for orientation. Oh, isn't that weird? That stood up.
Want to use that microphone? Turn on the microphone. Yep. Use a microphone in hand for public record. There you go.
All right. I think we're live. My apologies. You saw me test this earlier with the screen on. The laser printer does not work, laser pointer. The circle is the location of the property. We're almost into Drake. This area is referred to as Christian Hill. Will this make it advanced, too? Yes. The property itself has 75 feet of frontage on Favel Drive, which was formerly called Fox Street. It was relayed out in 1996. And because the zoning changed in 2005, December 2004, it went from a 70-foot frontage to a 90-foot frontage and from a 7,000-square-foot zone to a 10,000-square-foot zone. This particular piece of property has 9,349 square feet, so it's 600-plus square feet short. The goal is to build a modest home. This is a two-and-a-half-story, very in character with what the rest of the neighborhood is there. The two views here are the current progress of the drawings for the house. These are not final plans. But it is a front view on the left and a rear view. So you see a small deck on the back. And the land, in this case, slopes from left to right downhill. As far as topography is concerned, these are preliminary contours, as interpreted from 10-foot interval USGS contours, but pretty representative in my view of walking the site this afternoon. And there is about a 20-foot grade drop from the upper right-hand corner to the lower left-hand corner here. So there is some topography to deal with. As far as hardship in this case, the lot was created in 1891, so it goes way back. The family has owned this property since October 26, 1945. And this is Joe's grandfather that bought the property, William Sargent. And if you're familiar with the local area over there, William was a World War II vet. I might say World War I there. Might be my bad. World War II vet. And there's actually a William Sargent Memorial Square, which I'll show you where that is, but it's right near this site. They named it that in 2016. I'm having trouble reading this from this distance. Oh, that'll work. I just got new glasses, too. Can you believe that? So the grandfather sold the he bought the property in 1945 and raised a family there. The grandfather sold it to Joseph and Carol back in 1976. Joe is a Vietnam vet, so there's some history of military service with this family. And you grew up there. So and Joe grew up there. So the family's been in the neighborhood for a long, long, long time. Now Joe and his wife Jennifer have bought the property this past August, and they come and find out that they need a variance to build on it. As I said, the zoning changed in December of 2004, went from 70 feet to 90 feet of frontage and from 7,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet. So this lot made it in 2004. Now it doesn't. If we don't get an approval tonight, there is certainly some financial hardship here because this was always intended as a as a house lot. It's always been taxed as a separate house lot. The assessors currently have Joe's house as a as a house lot and the one up on Fox Street as a house lot. The other hardship one is kind of interesting, and I can personally relate to this, because the goal is to have the family stay together. You can see this family, three generations in the same place. And when we talked about this, it became personal to me because I grew up next door to where I lived. My mother there, she always had my grandkids. There was a great family camaraderie. And toward the end of my mother's life, we were there for her as well. So if this doesn't work tonight, there's some family hardship that is foreseeable. They've kind of always planned to have the family live there. I think that's kind of the story in a nutshell. So let me tell you a little bit about the rest of the neighborhood. The chart on the right was actually put together by your staff. And what it says is the median lot size around this this house, this lot is 7,800 square feet. This lot's 98, 9,600 square feet. And I went through and just kind of said, okay, let's look at all the lots in the neighborhood that don't comply. All of those red stars do not comply. And there's one more that doesn't show up on that. And it's the one the the orange square is the site, by the way. The blue dot is a swimming pool next door. And even though the house there is a conforming 10,000-square-foot, 90-square-foot, 90-foot frontage, that lot received a variance to build the garage. So technically, that lot isn't a complying lot either because it got a variance 15 years ago to build a garage within the front yard setback to Fox Street. I mentioned Sargent's square. It's the yellow dot in the bottom left-hand corner. So this has some historical value to it in the neighborhood. There's been some communication with some of the neighbors and staff was wonderful in putting this forward. Whoops. So there's a question of this retaining wall. And as you can see, this retaining wall is about six or seven feet high at its high end, down to a foot or two on the far right end. And it's literally driven telephone poles around the swimming pool on the lot next door. Not the prettiest thing in the world, certainly. And to make it even more interesting, it encroaches on the sergeant's property by about three or four feet. So how do we deal with this has been the question? We met with Ferguson. They're over here this afternoon. We walked the site. And I'm sure he'll want to talk afterwards, but we I'm not saying stories out of school. We met, we talked. And I think we have a solution on this that hopefully can be worked out between the two parties. And the solution, quite frankly, is because there's going to be regrading there, is to bury this wall. Leave it in place, bury it. We think we can do that, even though we don't have final topography and final site plans yet. But I think the issue can be put to bed, and I'd like to let the board rest this year short, that it can be put to bed and the swimming pool that's on the next property up behind that Stargate fence can be protected and not damaged in any way. Where is that Stargate? Where is that wall? It's the yellow line on the plan. So it kind of snakes a little bit back and forth on the property line according to the survey. And there are some, I call them flying buttresses, but they're cross braces in the upper left-hand corner of that. I think we can make the wall safer for the Ferguson's, more stable, very much like a highway embankment. When they build a highway, they put the road up at the top, three-to-one slope, that's stable for the road. Right now, they've got a vertical wall. We're going to make it three-to-one and stabilize that. And there'll be some agreement that has to happen between the parties. But I think you're in agreement, and hopefully you guys, we can work this out. The other questions that the staff had was the front yard calculation of the set green space in the front yard. I've done the calculation. In the current plan, the paved area is about 45%, which means 55% of the front yard will be landscaped, grass, laundry, whatever you. That means we don't need a variance there. And the building height, you have a 35-foot maximum height in the zoning bylaw. This building is about 23 feet high as it's calculated. I did talk to the building inspector this morning, told me how to calculate that. So we've done the calculation. So I think those two issues can be let go. So respectfully, what we're here for is variance on the front yard setback and the lot area. So these people can proceed and get a design and get a building permit. I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, sir. I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor?
Yeah, as he mentioned, I grew up on that property and
Just state your name for the record.
Joseph Sargent, Sr. I grew up on that property, and it was a wonderful experience, a good piece of land. And I remember my father built a backstop and the neighborhood would come down and play wiffle ball. And it was his it was his wish to give me to sell the house and property to us and to have his grandchildren live there also. And it's my wish to continue that and forward it to my son Joe.
Thank you very much, sir. Do you just sign in before you? Should be a sign sheet. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any others wishing to speak in favor?
Aye.
Good evening.
Good afternoon. Good evening. My name is Carol Sargent, and I'm the mother of Joe. I raised seven children in that house, and I had the land always next to me. And I wanted to save that land for one of my children to build in. Mr. Faville, who bought all the land behind us when our neighbor died, we were all in shock because we were so used to having that all of Faville Drive. It was just a hill, and we had everything. And then all of a sudden, we had all these houses come in. I mean, I'm sure we've come before the board. We used to walk along, and they'd come and show us what was going to happen, what was going to happen. And it turned out, you know, we accepted the building, all those new houses being built us. And I just think that Mr. Faville came to my house at least four or five times, begging me to sell my property to him so that he could build another house there. I said, no, I'm going to save it. We've lived there for 46 years, Joe and I. And I was my I mean, and I saved this land so that I could let my son build on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is like, it's all twisted in here.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak in favor? In favor? Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Midge Landry, and I live at 54 East Sixth Street, which goes opposite of Fauvel or Fox, one lower than Fox. And I'm in favor. They're a good family, and I know they'll take care of their property and their home. I'm just I I'm on East Sixth Street. I'm just hoping that once it starts getting built, the city will fix East Sixth Street because it's really beat up.
Thank you, ma'am. Any others wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition?
Slide off there. All right. My name is John Ferguson. I live at 65 East Sixth Street. I'm a direct abutter to the sergeant, so to the proposal. I am here to say that I'm not 100% opposed, but I am at this point. There is so many unknown variables that have not been disclosed. I'm seeing for the first time a rendering of the house. A rendering is not even where it's going to lay on the on the lot line. As far as the retaining wall, which is partly on their land and partly on my land, yes, it is a telephone retaining wall. To correct you, one side is nine feet tall. It's holding up my whole backyard and a 32,000-gallon pool. The proposal of backfilling up to the wall and burying it is a temporary solution in my mind. Again, everything to make a decision tonight on this property, on this, there's too many unknown variables. There's too many things that that have not been come to light until right now and not been able to for myself to actually investigate and take a look at. All right. If we backfill that 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 wall and we hold that wall soil, which again, I am not opposed to, okay, but it's a I think it's a temporary fix. I'm sorry. It will rot. It will decay, and I will have a one-foot variance. Now, with a 32,000-gallon pool before that, that can actually shift. The land will shift. It's compromising the integrity of the wall. There's there's other things. There's been no soil samples. I mean, I have disturbed land, there's undisturbed land. There's so many different variables of what could happen when they build this house. Now, they're going to take down 80-foot pine trees, which we all pine trees have a shallow root growing system, which grows up and behind the retaining wall, which goes into my property. So again, that will that will affect the integrity of the wall. Not to mention, I don't know the sightlines, how high this house is compared to my house, compared to looking down, privacy reasons. I mean, I have a built-in pool. I have all this stuff that, you know, I bought the property because when I investigated, it was unbuildable. All right. So we have the pine trees. And again, I'm not saying no, but I'm not saying yes. You can't just make a decision when me, as a director butter, is the first time I'm seeing any of this information. Now, what are the sightlines from the back of my house to the top of their house? What are the sightlines from the house below it to their house? None of this has been addressed. Nothing has been addressed about something about a walkout cellar. I mean, we have, what, a 35-foot maximum height on the top of a house in a residential area? Is that 35 feet from where? You're going to take all different points? Again, all this stuff is is not disclosed until five minutes ago. And five minutes ago, they have their experts. And I want you guys to build the house. I mean, I really do. I'm not saying anything bad about it. I just want to protect myself. So you can't just come in at the last minute, the last hour, and propose all this stuff and not let the abutter, myself or anybody else, have a full view of what is going to happen with this property in this land. It's 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 I am trying to protect myself. I mean, I would like I've spoke with them. It was a very nice conversation. Nothing's in writing. Nothing's solid. I mean, can you can you tell me how high off my property line is their ridge line or their second floor? Because that looks like almost a three-story building from what I just saw earlier.
I'll respond after, if that's okay.
Yeah. So you can we can we can certainly get some answers for you.
Well, my main concern is we have 80-foot pine trees. I have a retaining wall that's holding up my property. I didn't build any of this. It's been there for 40 years. I bought the house 10 years ago, all right, on the assumption that that could not be buildable. And I empathize with these people. It's family land. They should be able to build, but they should be able to come forward and explain and give complete detail to an abutter before tonight.
See, I have just a question on that retaining wall.
Mm-hmm.
That was you said that's been there for 40 years. That retaining wall was there when you when you bought the house?
Yes.
You didn't?
I didn't do anything.
You didn't build that?
No. This pool's 40 years old. I mean, I sent you guys pictures, and I sent you everything. If you look it up, that that wall has been there for 35 to 40 years. I mean, they can attest to it. I mean, I think they swam in the pool.
They never swam in the pool, but we do know.
There was a friend of yours that built it. Again, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay. That's all. All right.
Well, they saw the you saw all the pictures, right?
We'll take them. We'll take I'll take a copy if you want to approach the bench. I'll take a copy for the record. Do we have one, Fran? Okay. Yeah.
So again, that's my main opposition. I just there's not enough information for me to I don't want to regret it. And I also think building something of that type of structure behind this house is going to add value to the neighborhood. I think it's going to devalue my house. I really do because of the privacy that I have within this within this area.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Thank you, sir, appreciate that. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. That being said, I'd like to open it up to the board.
May I respond?
Not at this time, sir. Dennis?
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of questions, but first, is it Doug Crispin or Dave Crispin?
Dave.
Dave, sorry, Dave. I, I have a couple of questions for you regarding the site plan, if you could just kinda help me understand it. So, it looks like the grade that would be roughly where the driveway is, is about thirty-six, I think?
That's an assumed datum.
Yeah, so it's required for the submission to have-
Come back to the lectern, please, for the record.
It's required for the submission to have topo.
Say again?
It's required for the submission to include two for contours. So you didn't do that.
I, I didn't prepare the application.
Right, the application's incomplete. That part, that's part of the requirement for the package, is to have two for contours. And so we don't have that as part of the package here to look at, so it's an incomplete package, so I'm going by what you gave us, but I feel that we need a landscape plan, understand what's going on with the trees, we need a correct, proposed grading plan that shows how you're gonna mitigate the water, the drainage, how you're gonna deal with the slopes on the site, because significant slopes here, how you're gonna deal with the retaining wall? And I feel like you should, you should provide us with elevations that are reflecting what the proposed grades are gonna do, because we don't have that information either, we're going by a sketch with this twenty-three-foot dimension on here, but that's, that's not based on anything that's, you know, graded, no scientific, you know, documentation showing that you have thought this through. It's a, it's a, it's a bit of a wish. So I think we should be looking at more information, in my opinion, but, that being said, if these grades were to be believed, you roughly would be coming at the driveway about thirty-six. Your finished floor would be roughly at thirty-six, or would you be sloping down to the house?
Again, conceptually, and, and the reason where, where we're at, my understanding was that the final site, there is no site plan review process for this single-family lot, there is the variance process for the frontage and lot area, which led me to believe that the construction details did not be required at this point. If I'm wrong, then we will have-
Have you reviewed the requirements for the submissions for variance?
As I said, I did not prepare, I know, I know the requirements for variances, does typically not require, in my experience, a site plan, so-
It includes a site plan that shows two for contours.
Okay, well, we'll probably continue this for that reason, then, if that's permitted.
And I would say we need elevations that reflect the two for contours on the proposed site plan.
Well, what, what we were hoping to do, if we got a green light, I guess, would be to spend the money to do that extra step, and it sounds like we're gonna have to do that before, um, to secure that.
Well, it needs to prove out that it, it solves the requirements for the drainage, it needs to solve the requirements for the reduction in lot size, it needs to solve the requirements for building height, so we, we don't, and, and I'd like to see how you're dealing with the existing trees, is it gonna be stripped, is the lot gonna be just completely left barren, or do you intend to keep any of the trees?
I, I can tell you, almost all the trees are gonna have to come down to build on this size lot, yes, and do the grading that's, that's required. But I'm also not aware of anything in the zoning bylaw that says you have any requirement on, on cutting of trees.
No, you're right, but we need to understand how drainage is gonna be dealt with, so oftentimes when we're given a variance like this, we're seeing a set of civil drawings that document how the drainage is gonna be dealt with.
Well, that's valuable feedback, I was not aware of that and as I said, I kinda came on a little late in the game on this, so-
I, I feel your pain, but I'm just saying, it's hard for me on this board to represent what I think should be a reasonable decision without the information.
Fair enough.
So, but I, I just wanna back in, do you have any idea what the finished floor elevation's gonna be here?
There is a thumbnail sketch that puts the floor grade about a foot, two feet above the lowest part of the lot, which would be the southwest corner of the lot there, down the foot of the hill, so that the driver would slope out to the street.
Slope up to the street?
Down to the street, so the driver would drain towards the street. The rest of the lot-
Now, the, the lot slopes from the-
It slopes the other way right now, clearly.
So are you intending to do retaining walls on, on the new lot?
There, there may be, we don't know for sure yet, because all I've got is conceptual existing topography.
All right.
And, and again, the, the design hasn't been done, my understanding was that provided the plan complied to the building heights from the zone, building inspector, the front yard setbacks, the rear yard setbacks, there was no site plan approval, doesn't mean we're not gonna do an engineering design, I just wasn't aware that you needed that tonight, so.
So, so what I'd like to see is a complete application that includes the two for contours, but I'd also like to see the building elevations developed that reflect the proposed grading so that we can recognize that you're accurate with what you're saying about the building height, because I don't know if I believe you, because I have nothing to test it with, there's no information that says what it's gonna be.
I, I guess all I can say, if it doesn't comply, he's not gonna get a building and permit, so he'd have to modify the building, so that's kinda where we're at, yet, we only have preliminary plans on the building, they're not hard and fast drawings yet.
This is a very difficult site from a grading standpoint, and I think it needs to be proven that you can solve it, and solve it in a reasonable way, because adding retaining walls adds cost, so I don't know if you're gonna throw in twenty-foot retaining walls, which doesn't make sense in my-
I can tell you it won't be a twenty-foot retaining wall, it will not be, no.
So, well, in any event, I would like to see us continue this and complete the documentation that's required for submission, and add to that the elevations that would prove out what the building is that you're presenting here tonight, based on the proposed elevations. I'd also like to see a landscaping plan, so we can understand that the trees that are on the site are being removed and how you plan on re-landscaping the site. And then I'd also like to see a solution in the grading plan as to what you intend to do with that retaining wall. If it's three-in-one slope, or what you're gonna do, but I'd like to see those things, if my other board members support me on that for the next submission.
That, that's fair, and as I said, I have conceptual ideas, they're just not hard-lined yet.
I, I do like the project, just to say that, I think that the variance is not a stretch, that you're really close as far as the required lot size, but there's, to me, too many unknowns and it's not a complete package that was submitted, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis, Sean.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman, I agree with what Dennis is proposing, that we probably, we need a little, little more information on this, I'm looking at the site plan and it, I, I'm now, I can't tell what, how the driveway is gonna be laid out, because it looks like, based on what the site plan is saying, that the driveway breaks off, not only goes straight, but breaks off to the, to the lot line, and now we're getting, I understand, new renderings with, with new plan, with new ideas and everything, and I understand that that's probably where staff was coming in with regards to the landscaping of the open space portion of it, and how you're trying to, you know, minimize that, but we would need the new site, we would need new site plans to show that the driveway is not curving off to this, to the, to the edge of the, to the edge of the thing. Plus, also, I don't see any instances on this, as far as the driveway is concerned, for a curb cut, and how long, how big the curb cut's gonna be, we need, that's something we need to, we need to know as well, because there are variances involved with the curb cut as well, so, but I would, I would agree with Dennis, Dennis's proposal that, you know, we go back to the drawing board, well, not go back to the drawing board, but come back with the continuance.
We've, we've got services with these folks, Step A, Step B, Step C, we're gonna have folks take Step B, do the design, and come back to you.
No, it makes, it makes total sense, I mean, I mean, the designs as, as laid out, they do look, they do look nice, but I mean, we need more information in order to-
And just for, just for clarity, the, the, the site plan that was submitted, call it a site plan, it showed a building and a, and a footprint on it?
Yeah, well, the site plan, site plan was submitted, proposed plot plan.
When we, when we learned about the retaining wall the other day, and we talked about Mr. Ferguson with this, the house is gonna slide to the left away from that retaining wall, in my opinion, is where it wants to be, to give some space between that retaining wall.
Okay.
It'll still be within the side yard setbacks on the other side, but it's, I think it's gonna have to move, so the driveway, the driveway will change, everything's gonna change.
Which is why we need new site, which is why, why we need new site plans, 'cause we can't go off these ones, especially since they're presuming that proposed, that driveway, the proposed driveway that was to curve off is now not gonna curve off, it's only gonna go straight, so.
Personally, I don't think they're gonna need a U-turn in their driveway.
No, but I mean, again, that's, we have to, we have to base, we have to base our, our decisions on what's, what's before us, so, and without the updated site plans and without the renderings, I think, and without the, as Dennis mentioned, the, the layout of the topography, it's, it makes it difficult for us to, to make a decision at this point right now, so, that's why I would, I would agree, I would probably suggest that continuance as well, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Sean. Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I, I do agree with my colleagues, sir, and, but I also see the merit of, of this application and how it will fit in with, like, the layout, the character of the neighborhood. I think, I think we, or at least from my standpoint, there's a lot of merits to this application and this is a viable, feasible plan for, for the lot, there's just missing some, some key details or key elements. But I, I wanted to give, to give you an opportunity or a chance to, to answer any questions that were brought up with other speakers in regards to the retaining wall and how that's gonna be addressed and, and the integrity of that wall, did you wanna address any of those topics that were addressed earlier?
I don't think there's any more to be said, Mr. Ferguson, my client, knows there's gotta be a detailed survey, there's gotta be a detailed design, hopefully we can talk and, and figure this out before we come back to you. I'm kinda thinking six weeks is, is best, survey world is busy, we might get snow and mess us up, but I know, you meet twice a month, I believe, I'm, I'm kinda thinking six weeks would be a good time to come back.
Okay, that, that makes total sense, I, I think you guys are doing this the right way, you know, trying to work it out with all the neighbors and the Butters and everything, so, I, I think this is a feasible plan, we just need to work out all the details, like the rest of my colleagues said, but those are my comments, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Van. So you've heard the, the wish of the board, I, I think, you know, I do agree wholeheartedly, I think we need to walk through the application process and, and get the required documents. I know Fran was taking copious notes over there, but I, I will, I would advise you to, to utilize the services that the DPD has to offer, we have a tremendous staff over there, and if you go through the application process itself, it'll, it's gonna give you that checklist, and we really, what we're really looking for is that site plan, landscape plan, topography, correct? Dennis, if my memory is still there?
Yeah.
And that, and that's, that's part of the requirement for the package. I also think it's very important, as I, you know, I make this advice to all petitioners, is maintain open dialogue and communication, Mr. Ferguson's here tonight, he, clearly, it's a longstanding neighborhood over there with, 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 with good neighbors, wonderful families, gentleman came tonight, just looking for some answers, which he's, you know, he's entitled to, and I think some of those answers, you know, will be answered with the appropriate plan package. We're not up against the clock here, six weeks, in my opinion, is, is deep, but you're telling me the surveying world is, is busy, I'll believe you, I don't, I've never had a six-week request for a continuance, and if that's what you and your, your clients are comfortable with, we will be. You know, I would suggest after you get your application in order, you might wanna set a meeting with Mr. Ferguson and the neighbors, go through those items. I think the biggest thing I'm looking at is, once we do move forward, is that, that retaining wall, it's not gonna be retaining much, for much longer, so I think that's something we all have to look at collectively as well, to make sure that maintains the integrity of your property, Mr. Ferguson, as well as, I do have the same concerns about the backfill and, you know, knee wall and the whole nine yards, so if we could get all our ducks in a row, I, you said you came in the eleventh hour, certainly, weather is time here, I think yesterday and the day before's weather is not indicative of what's gonna happen over the next four or five weeks, so.
It's weekend, snow.
So if we're looking, we're looking six weeks out, we're looking at-
To twenty-four?
Twenty-fourth of February?
Uh, yes, the February twenty-fourth.
Okay.
My client's telling me six weeks is too long.
Okay.
A month, maybe, a month better, no, no pressure.
No, no, I, I have no pressure, I agree.
We'll, we'll get it to you in a month.
To ten?
How soon before the meeting do you need it?
Two, uh, two weeks, ten days, but, yeah, yeah, ten days.
So I got, I got three weeks, basically, to get-
Yeah, we got a cooldown period of ten days, we're looking at February tenth?
Yes, the February tenth meeting.
Okay, so we'll do a continuance on February tenth, I strongly suggest you reach out to our marvelous DPD and they'll help you with the application process and get you through those, those requirements, to make sure your application is, is clear. Sorry, I don't take questions, but I will say this is your notice for the public hearing, there will be no other public notice. You're not required to attend, I, I would suggest with the open communications meeting is if you're, you're satisfied at that point, if you have anything you wanna bring to the board or to DPD, you can do that via email or letter of communication, or you can do the old-fashioned way, write one out, but you don't have to be in attendance here, it just, I think it's gonna be in the best interest of all parties if you just have a better understanding of what we're doing and we get the requirements of the petition. So February tenth, we're all in, we're all in agreement, it's not a requirement, this is the public notice, there will be no other notice in the, as required, and you do need to maintain the posting on the site until then. Any other concerns of the board? We have motion for continuance.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB two thousand twenty dash three for Seventy Fox Street, also known as Seventy Favell Drive, to continue this matter to February tenth, two thousand twenty.
You have a second?
Second motion.
A roll call?
Chairman, pardon?
Approve continuance to, to ten twenty.
Member Peck?
Approve continuance.
Member Callahan?
Approve continuance to February tenth, twenty twenty.
Member McCarthy?
Approve continuance to February tenth.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, my apologies on the confusion.
No, no need to apologize, this is, that's why we're here, to make sure we're all on the same page, thank you for your time. Moving forward under ZB two thousand twenty dash four, James Orber and Jeffrey Crowley, nineteen twenty-one Wamisit Street slash twenty-two Abbott Street, section five point one, section five point three point two, section five point one point ten. Mr. James Orber and Mr. Jeffrey Crowley are seeking variance approval to construct a single-family home at twenty-two Abbott Street, a vacant lot that has merged with nineteen twenty-one Wamisit Street for the purpose of zoning. Nineteen twenty-one Wamisit Street is in a traditional neighborhood multi-family TMF zoning district, and twenty-two Abbott Street is in traditional neighborhood two-family TTF zoning district. Unmerging lots require variance for the pre-existing non-conforming duplex at nineteen twenty-one Wamisit Street and for the proposed single-family home at twenty-two Abbott Street under section five point one for minimum rear yard setback, and under section five point three point two for minimum usable open space per dwelling unit. Twenty-two Abbott Street also requires an additional variance under section five point one point ten for minimum lot width, and for any other relief required on the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, Counselor, how are you?
Good, Mr. Chairman, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is John Geary, Geary &amp; Geary, thirty-two Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing Jim Zorbus and Jeff Crowley, they are the applicants and the owners of nineteen dash twenty-one Wamisit Street and twenty-two Abbott Street. They purchased this property back in November of two thousand and eighteen, since that time, they have rehabbed the existing two-family structure, which is on the Wamisit Street lot, they invested about ninety thousand dollars into that property, it's currently in new condition, occupied by two separate families and provides sufficient off-street parking. These lots were merged many, many, many years ago, we are here tonight proposing to separate the lots, as you indicated in your prologue, by doing so, it would allow us to construct a twelve-hundred-square-foot single-family home on the vacant lot on Abbott Street, according to the plans that we submitted, the architectural and elevation plans that were submitted. But in order to do so, we need dimensional relief pursuant to section five point one of the ordinance, as you mentioned, and we need that for both- And we need that for both lots. Obviously, the, the construction of the new single-family home requires significant relief, but we also need relief for the Wamisit Street property because we cannot leave a existing structure non-conforming without relief. So, we understand, and just to back up a minute, the Abbott Street lot is in the traditional two-family zone, the Wamisit Street lot is in the traditional multi-family zone. We understand that the relief we're requesting tonight is significant. However, if you look at our application in relation to the street, what is currently on Abbott Street, it's a, it's a reasonable request. Within my submittals, I provided some information regarding the lot size for the budding and surrounding lots on Abbott Street. And the DPD staff comments elaborated on that. So, essentially, our lot is larger than most lots on Abbott Street. The dimensional requirements that we're seeking are less than what is on most of the properties on Abbott Street. So, again, in relation to, to the street, the request that we're, the relief that we're seeking is, is reasonable, in my view. The Abbott Street lot is currently a paved lot. It's impervious pavement from side to side, from back to front. It's basically a black site, currently used for excess parking from an abut that runs an auto body shop. So, by allowing for the construction of a single-family home on this property, we'd be getting rid of that black site. We'd be providing new housing for a family, a little bit of green space and appropriate off-street parking with, with appropriate drainage for the home. The DPD staff comments also suggested some, some conditions if the board were to approve this, this petition. One of the conditions was to submit a landscape plan for both lots. We would be happy to do that. Another condition was to, was to move the structure on Abbott Street closer to, further, closer to the street, so it aligns with the, with all the other properties running down that side of the street. And I believe the last condition was to remove any or reduce any excess impervious pavement on the Wamisit Street site, so that there's just enough pavement to allow for the four required off-street parking spaces. So, we're happy to do that as well. I guess my only comment with regard to that condition would be that Wamisit Street is a busy street, cars are parked on both sides of the street. You all have probably seen the mirrors hanging on, the side-view mirrors hanging off of cars going up and down that street. So, the more cars you can get off the street, the better. So, but nonetheless, if, if that's a condition that the board would, would insist upon, we would be happy to do it. We feel we meet the criteria for a variance in this, in this instance. The lot, the special hard, there's a, there's a special hardship owing to the circumstances relating to the shape of these lots, affecting these lots, but not affecting the zoning district generally. The, there's no detriment to the public good by, by granting the relief request. At any time that we can provide additional housing, it's generally in the best interest of the public. And we'd certainly not be nullifying or derogating from the intent of the zoning districts for these two zoning districts by granting the variance. So, we would respectfully ask for approval of our petition, and we're happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Counselor, I appreciate that. I, I do want to echo your, your positive comments and concerns as it relates to the DPD. Jared wrote an extensive write-up in regards to the site with, with the research and with his, his ability to lay things out in words to give us an overview of exactly what is going on in, in relations to this property and other properties.
He did, he went into great detail about comparing this lot with the dimensional requirements in the zoning with this lot to all the other budding lots on the street. And as I said, we, we exceed most, most on the street.
I, I agree with you wholeheartedly. DPD has, has done a wonderful job over the last several years, writing the narratives and providing the information, not only to the board, but to counsel and the petitioners and into the public. And that's why I stressed earlier, to utilize the DPD and their expertise, it helps the process.
Yes, we always try to do that.
Yeah. As always, you're always very well-prepared, Counselor. That being said, I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor?
I'm supposed to be in opposition.
In favor? That portion of our public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
My name's David Coach. I'm the president of the Back Central Neighborhood Association. How do you get this out of here, sir? And I guess I'm supposed to speak on the parking problem, because the parking problem is at a critical maximus in that neighborhood. Most of yous know that the city of Lowell started in Back Central. I've lived there all my life, 59 years come June. My family's been in the same home, we're probably about 200 feet from the proposed site. My father was a builder, my boys and I are builders. We're not, we're not here to say, hey, we don't need any building done in the neighborhood. We're not advocating that. These gentlemen should have the right to do what they damn well please on their property. But what we're saying is, we need some parking up there. You know, I was hoping that the city manager or somebody in the upper echelons of our local government would be here tonight, because we've asked them time and time again. They've allowed us to take charge of these neighborhood condos. And near almost every one of them, there are some vacant lots that we've been looking as a neighborhood group to expand, so we could alleviate parking. So, Mr. Espinola, who called my wife tonight complaining about, we have enough parking, he can't find a parking spot on any of the streets around in our neighborhood, right? We want to alleviate their problems also, because a lot of these elderly Portuguese people have lived their, most of their lives now, ever since they come from Portugal back in the early 60s. But that shouldn't steal away from these gentlemen's right to have to do what they need to do to make a living. Because that's what we're, that's what we're here to do, right? We're here to make the city a better place. I know that's what I got into this position to do. I wasn't here to come up here and say, no, we don't want this and we can't have this. No, we have to be able to help these gentlemen, but also help the people who are living in our neighborhood. The gentleman that owns the building across the way from this property is, they own an insurance property there at the old Elary's home, used to be a children's home. And they're always towing people out of there that are parking in there illegally, because that's their property, they don't need people parking there. So, why cannot somebody in the city help the neighborhood group expand these car condos to alleviate the parking problem up there? So, gentlemen like this are able to do business in our neighborhood and in our cities without having everybody complaining about a parking spot. Parking is, it is an issue that has been going on for decades, and it will go on for decades longer. So, we have to ask ourselves, are we going to do something about it? Or are we just going to pave over everything and let the chips fall where they may? Because I don't know how many of you, seven or eight or nine, actually live in the Back Central neighborhood, so yous don't experience, you drive, you may drive through and say, yeah, there's a couple of merits torn off the car, but I actually live there. I see the parking problem. I'm, all's we're doing is asking for a little help from the people that we're paying taxes to. That's it. I'm not saying, don't let these gentlemen build. No, I'm not saying that, quite to the contrary. I'm saying, let's, let's build the city together, let's make this a wonderful place. Because I'm not leaving here till it is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate your time. Any, any others wishing to speak in opposition?
And my name is Maria, and I live in the neighborhood. And basically, I agree with the gentleman that was just here speaking. I have nothing against them trying to build a couple of new houses there, but as he said, there is just no parking anywhere. The neighborhood is overly crowded, and it would be great to have that as parking space. It would be most beneficial to the neighborhood to put either garden space there or parking space instead of building additional housing and bringing more cars into the neighborhood, because there is simply no parking. And that's, our neighbors feel the same way, and I'm just speaking for them because they don't speak English.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you could just sign, if you could just sign the tenet sheet for this evening.
Could I have one more thing to say?
Sure.
I appreciate it. You know, as far as alleviating the parking problems, right down at the bottom of the street here, where these gentlemen would like to build, the neighborhood runs a car condo. And right across the street, we've been petitioning the city for a decade now. It's, it's an overgrown, people use it for a dump lot that they knocked the house down on years ago, decades ago. There's the, there's the solution. Help us turn that into a little bit more of a car condo. Guys got to have the power. Let's make it happen. And then, then we're not even having this conversation. These people's problems are resolved, theirs are resolved, and hey, I helped fix a problem. That's what dads do.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, that portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anything you'd like to add at this time, Counselor?
I'd just like to say, I agree with the sentiments of the neighborhood. It's, it's a tight neighborhood, parking is, is difficult. We are providing for off-street parking for, for both properties.
Thank you. That being said, I'd like to open up to the board. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I agree with you, Counselor, yes. Then I agree with the, you know, there is parking issues in the neighborhood, it's certainly, but you are mitigating that by bringing the, the two parking spots into the, into the fold here on Morton Street. Only thing I had concern, like, so, again, I commend Jared on doing such an extensive, great job on his memo of breaking down everything that he said. But he did suggest that possibly moving the property up to kind of coincide with the rest of the neighborhood. Any thought on, any thought on?
We're happy to do that. I, I agree with Jared, it does, it will align this property with the rest of the homes running down that side of Abbott Street. So, there's no, no problem, we just need that additional relief.
Yeah.
The front yard setback.
Well, yeah, I don't want to create another thing that's already there, but I mean, it does, I mean, we're going one way or the other. I mean, I, I'll listen to my, one of my other fellow board members are thinking, but I probably kind of agree with Jared in maybe moving, having the property moved up so it kind of aligns with the, aligns with the rest of the neighborhood.
Be happy to accommodate that.
Gives a little more space in the back for more green, additional green space. But that's, I could go either way on that, but I'll listen to whatever my other fellow board members are thinking on that. I'll let them weigh in on that. But other than that, again, sharing the same sentiments that the neighbors do about the parking, yeah, it is. It's a tough neighborhood, it's always been tough for parking there historically, and it still is. And certainly, Mr. Coach, if they had, I, I would agree with you, if the city can do something to alleviate that with more car condos, that would be fantastic. But unfortunately, this isn't the board that can do it. We're, we're an appeals board, so that's something that, that would bring up to some other, other departments in the, in the, in the city. So, or maybe DPD can recommend where to go for that. But with that, I think it makes sense to have the lots broken up and the relief that you're seeking. I know it's a lot, but in conjunction, you do have a hardship and in conjunction with the setting of the neighborhood, I think it could be done. I think the relief can be granted on both lots, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean, Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I, I do agree with Mr. Callahan in terms of, and Mr. Garrett, you seem to be aligned with the recommendation from, from DPD or Mr. Alvarez about moving buildings, so it aligns with the?
That's correct, we're willing, we're willing to do that.
Buildings of the, the character of the, the whole street. You know, I, I do sympathize with the neighbors and, and Mr. Coach and the butters. I do, I do know that parking and off-street parking is tough there. You know, I think with this new build, you're going to help alleviate, well, you won't add to any parking concerns. But, but overall, I think this, this petition has a lot of merits. It could be granted without any major judgment to that, to the city or to, to that neighborhood. And I think, like you said, you're in there of, anytime we can add more housing is usually a good thing, because housing is always in need in the city. So, overall, I think, I think this is a good project, and I wish you, incline, best of luck, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Van. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions, but the site plan that was submitted doesn't have any landscaping on it. And so, that was one of the conditions that I think is really critical. The Abbott Street site looks like there's a large portion of that site that's going to be, the pavement's going to be removed and it's going to be landscaped? Is that an assumption that I'm making, or is that what you're planning?
No, no, Abbott Street right now, as it, as it stands right now, is 100% impervious pavement. So, clearly, we would be adding the footprint of a, of a 1,200-square-foot home. We would be providing a driveway for two off-street parking spots. By moving the property, the structure forward, we would be creating a little bit more green space in the back of the, of the lot. So, yes, we would ultimately be getting rid of that black site and replacing it with what you would typically see with a home. Does that answer your question?
So, because we don't have a landscape plan, I'd like to see a condition, especially with the, that the landscape plan be provided, but especially at the Abbott Street site, that the area at the rear of the site be grassed or landscaped, but that there be no hardscape of any substantial amount provided.
Okay.
Because that, to me, is the win of this proposal, is that we're getting green space on these two lots that this, this whole part of the city needs desperately.
I agree.
Something that helps mitigate the runoff. And soften the whole aesthetic of this whole area. So, I'm, I'm, I mean, if we move it forward a little bit, that whole backyard's going to be over 20 feet deep by 33 feet wide. That's a, that's a, that's a pretty good green space. And then, we're talking about at the other site, roughly 632 square feet of green being provided on that site? I think that's what Jared had in his comments.
I think those were his calculations, yes. So, as I said, we're, we're happy to accommodate that condition as well. My only comment was, you know, sometimes the parking ordinance requires two parking spaces per dwelling unit. So, in this case, it's four for the Wamisit Street property. Oftentimes, family has, families have more than two, two cars. So, specifically for Wamisit Street, anytime you can get cars off the street, you're better off. But again, we're, we're happy to accommodate the comments.
The reason I, you're asking for so much relief.
We are.
By not providing the neighborhood with green space, you're providing the required zoning parking, which is the minimum.
Mm-hmm.
You're meeting that. And I think that anything that's left over should be thought about as how, how you solve part of the neighborhood problem with so much overbuilt area, not enough green space. And I think removing that pavement, adding something that's impervious, that's pervious, sorry, that allows us to handle drainage and improve the aesthetic of the neighborhood's a big win. So, I, I see that as a really good kind of give and take, where we're allowing so much relief with the reduction in lot size.
Sure.
That the city's getting back a lot of green space.
We're happy to do that.
I will say, when I first saw this, I said, wow, what a big ask. But then, you know, Jared did lay out a good, good argument. And the one that kind of put me over the top was the green space that we're getting in that neighborhood, which is a big, big win.
I agree. It's a, you know, on the face, it looks like a big ask, but when you compare it, when you get drilled down on it?
The, the one that I'm worried about a little bit, and I just want to kind of ask how we're going to address it in the comments section, is the fire department. So, the fire department had a comment about the width of the streets not being, it's only 20 feet wide, I think, right? Does not meet today's fire access requirements, 20 feet minimum street width, so we don't meet it. So, he's worried about adding to an already? meet it, so, um, he's worried about adding to an already bad situation over there with another property.
Right, so, obviously, you know, Abbott Street's been around forever, it's a, as you said, a 20-foot-wide street, there are, it's filled with homes, I would just suggest that, you know, by providing for new construction, it would be a safer structure than any other structure on the street, I think the fire department does their cursory review of the, of the application and, and, you know, that's their response, but, there's not too much we can do about that.
I, I, I don't know what to do about it either. Christine, how do they fight fires on the street that's less than 20 feet wide? Does anyone know?
That's a good question, I don't know, but because it's, um, because it's an existing condition, I'm sure that there's something in the fire code, which they do review during the building permit process, I'm not saying it has to be sprinkled, but they may require this to be a hardwired, um, fire alarm system, I think there's options that would, in the event of an emergency, if it took them, 'cause they're gonna have to get down that street anyways.
They must be able to, now, the truck is only maybe eight feet wide, so...
They require 20 feet, um, that's their preference, that's the current code.
Right.
But their cars can, the trucks can get down more narrow roads, I think if there is parking on both sides of the street.
I think it's just one side. Is it both sides or one side of Abbott Street?
One side, sure.
Just one side, right, that's what I thought.
So, I, they prob, I mean, I think they can get down there, I think it's tight, and I'm sure the fire truck might take out some, it's possible they could take out some rearview windows, but my, I think this would be reviewed under the fire code during the building permit process, and I, they'd likely to see increased fire code safety requirements in the new build. Would be my best guess.
And, and you are maintaining reasonable distances with your side yards, so that you're not right up against, so...
Right.
All right, um, that, that's all I had, as long as we can make a condition that that space behind Abbott be turned into impervious material, preferably green space.
Agreed.
And reduce any hardscape, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? So, you've heard, you've heard the, um, the comments of the board, we, I, I do want to, um, recognize the citizens that came tonight to speak on, on this, on this petition, and I, I want to thank Mr. Coach for coming out tonight and providing, not only the board, but I think, um, our fellow citizens with the issue of parking in back Central Street. Um, as Sean had alluded to earlier, we're not the, we're not the board of reason, uh, for the parking issue, however, as I toured this site on several occasions, I, I will make a note on record that, um, that, that lot on the corner, that has become a catch-all, uh, I would strongly recommend through DPD to Inspectional Service and the Building Department, Fire Department, uh, for the matter of record, to take a look at that property and reach out to the property owner and do, uh, have some due diligence and get it cleaned up.
It's on the corner of Merrill Rogers.
Yeah.
Exactly.
It is creating a, it's, it's creating attractive nuisance for children, it's creating a, a hazard for the neighborhood.
Is there a mattress on there right now?
Yes, there is.
Okay, I know.
Local dubner, one.
Yeah.
We're aware of this property and we're constantly...
The, the Dubner?
So, it's, um...
The Dubner condo, is that what it's called, Dubner, or...
No, the vacant lot that he's referring to, it's just a vacant lot, it's bank-owned, and we continually, um, go through cycles of enforcement.
Just one word?
But we're aware and we're on it.
Yeah, I, sorry, I would, I would, I would like to, but the public camera's closed, so, I, I can't...
There's just plenty of streets in the neighborhood.
Yeah, I, I understand, uh, but I, to, to your point, I know it's not related to this petition, and Councilor, I apologize for, for taking up some of your time, uh, but I, I do agree, uh, you're a gentleman of your word, you came out and, and, and your, your intent and purpose was to just make notice on, on the, on the parking, you spoke kindly of, of the gentlemen here tonight, they're gonna do the building, and, and you 're not opposed to that, um, but I, I think you took a prime opportunity to bring this to light, and I will give you credit for that, so, um, if we...
My father requires it.
Yeah, I'm sure he does, uh, so, if we could, if we could just follow that up as, as a side to this, and, for the record, there's nothing to do with the petition presented here by, by Council Gary and, and his clients, so, um, I just, it was very, one of the very first things that I, I noticed when I went down there, but, uh, I do want to move on, so, we have the condition for a landscape plan, um, and drainage plan?
Uh, in addition to the landscape plan, that the rear of the Abbott site remain as green space and that the hardscape be limited to as small an area as possible, hardscape being like a stoop for an exit door or, um, you know, I don't know what you're gonna do back there, but we, we want to maintain as much green space, I think that's a critical nature to the, uh, approval here.
There's no drainage.
Thank you.
Do you have any comments on drainage? Are my, my delving petitions right now?
Um, I don't think we got feedback, but they, the stormwater team wouldn't provide comments on single-family homes.
Okay, all right, so that, those would be the, those are the conditions, and gentleman, you're, you're good to do it, that's from Council Gary, okay. Any other comments by the board? That being said, may I motion?
Well, before, I just want to clarify, so, Fran or Christine, um, so, we have a lot of things, I just want to make sure we're clear, are we doing, we should be doing separate votes because we have two different lots, we're gonna unmerge lots, then, uh, then we have additional variances to do on each lot, correct? Is, so, should we do three separate votes, probably?
Yes, probably.
Okay, so, shouldn't the first vote be to unmerge lots with the variances that, um, with regards to unmerging the lots and then, then do the lot separate? I'm just going by Jared's, uh, Jared's memo, he's, he's listed out a lot of... So, in Jared's memo, he lists out, "Unmerging the lots requires variances for pre-existing non-conforming duplex in 1921 Wamisit and for the proposed single-family home in 22 Abbott under Section 5.1," and then he lists out about five different...
Uh, yeah, so, Jared did cite three different sections of the zoning ordinance, that would require three votes.
Okay, so, the first vote would be to unmerge the lots, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay, with the, with the variances that Jared has laid out in his memo, got it?
Yes.
All right, so, um, and this is all with the conditions of providing a landscape plan, uh, and that, uh, the property at Abbott Street, uh, the rear property of Abbott Street remains green space with a layout of impervious materials, as minimal impervious materials as possible, correct? Okay, so, with that, three, Mr. Chairman, uh, first vote, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2020-4 for 1921 Wamisit Street and 22 Abbott Street to unmerge the lots with variances under Section 5.1 on, for minimum lot size, minimum land area per dwelling unit, minimum frontage, minimum front yard setback, and minimum side yard setback with the previously mentioned condition.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, um, it just occurred to me, with, uh, agreeing to move the structure on Abbott Street forward, it's gonna require an additional, uh, variance for the driveway.
So, we'll do that one?
We'll do that when we get to Abbott Street.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we even got to, how far are we gonna move it forward? Did we?
Seven votes.
Yeah?
Seven votes. One more.
Well, the first one? No, 'cause we're gonna do, we're gonna do another vote on Abbott Street alone. I'm on, I'm on, unmerging of the lots first.
Right.
There you go, let's, we'll do it that first, unmerge the lots with those variances.
Which was seconded by Mr. Peck, may I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin.
Approved.
Member Peck.
Approved.
Member Callahan.
Approval conditions, I don't know, approve, yeah, approval conditions, yeah.
Member McCarthy.
Approved.
All right, uh, three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2020-4 for 1921 Wamisit Street for variance approval under Section 5.1 for minimum rear yard setback and under Section 5.3.2 for usable open space per dwelling unit with the, with the previously mentioned condition.
May I have a second?
Second motion.
A roll call.
Chairman Perrin.
Approval condition.
Member Peck.
Approved conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approval conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approved.
All right, uh, three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2020-4 for 22 Abbott Street for approval under Section 5.1 for minimum lot width and section, and minimum front yard setback, correct, Christine?
Yes, but also the driveway setback, um, 'cause the proposed plot plan has a, a, and you can interrupt me if I'm wrong, there's a bump out in the rear, and so, if we move the house up, then the second legal parking space will no longer have three feet setback from the house.
So, be...
Basically, you're just being, allowing them to pave up to the house.
Yeah.
To allow them to come forward, so you just have to include a driveway setback variance from the structure, not the property line.
And the driveway setback.
Yes.
Okay.
But I just want to make it clear that's, in addition to what they already are asking.
Yes, all right, with, with previously mentioned conditions.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Roll call.
Chairman Perrin.
Approved.
Member Peck.
Approved.
Member Callahan.
Approval conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approved conditions.
Did you get it all, Fran?
Uh, yes.
Okay, that's it, I think we got it all.
Got it all?
Yep, we got it all, right? No more votes.
We have to...
Right, so, we're just inclusive of the driveway, and you'll, we'll, we'll get the notes typed up and get them out to you, so, at this point, you've been approved, wish you the best of luck.
Perfect, thank you all.
Thank you, the residents, for coming out this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your kind words. Moving forward under ZB 2020-5, for variance Sylvia Jaman at 18 Morton Street, Section 5.1, Sylvia Jaman is seeking variance approval to construct an approximately 296 square foot addition to the existing single-family home at 18 Morton Street, the home is traditional neighborhood, single-family TSF zoning district, and requires a variance under Section 5.1 to exceed the maximum floor area ratio, FAR, and for any other relief required on the zoning ordinance. Good evening, sir. How are you?
Good evening. Uh, my name is...
Your project?
My name is Emilio, I am the general contractor for Miss Jaman. So, we are looking to construct an addition above an existing, uh, area in the back of the house to accommodate another bedroom on the second floor, we are also looking to, there are two octagon bump outs on the driveway side of the house, and we would like to fill in the middle to extend the kitchen, and then we would like to do a dormer on the second floor, which would accommodate headroom for us relocating the staircase to get up there. And currently, the FAR, the, um, is, is high, but it is due to the fact that they're counting the basement as square footage of the house, it says that the basement's ceiling height is 5'6", and nobody here would say, "I'm a tall man," and, I mean, I have to get crouched down to walk around down there, so I don't see how that could be con, considered usable square footage of the house. Without counting that, although we do exceed the limit, we, it does bring us within the same size, um, ratio as all the other houses on the road that have this same problem.
Okay, you're familiar with the plans we received?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. That being said, I'd like to open up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor, that portion of public hearing is now closed, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, that portion of the public hearing is now closed, might open up to the board, Van?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman, to the applicant, I'm sorry, you get a chance to see, um, the comments by the, by the city, by DPD? Dated for January 6th, is there anything you want to address in those comments, um, from the, from the memo?
Yes, you, are you in receipt of the comments? You have a copy of them?
Yes, I have them right here, I'm looking for, I must be missing a page, I don't have, oh wait.
It's back, that's...
It's double-sided.
Not the way my secretary printed it out, it isn't. Yes. Yeah. Okay, um, am I gonna read through it?
Yeah, if you just take a moment to look at them and, um, Mr. Peck will.
Yeah.
I'm very fam, I'm familiar with them.
You're familiar, okay, um, you have any comments in regards to, um, I know you spoke a little about the, the floor area ratio?
Mm-hmm.
And then, and you're saying that you, if, if the basement, uh, square footage is not included, um, that, that would add to that.
If the basement's square footage isn't included, it would bring the FAR down.
Yep.
Which would bring it, you know, closer, which would bring it in the same as the rest of the, I think there's six or seven houses on the road that have the same issue and have been, you know, done work to their house, this would bring them down, this would bring this house down to that size, if you didn't include the basement.
Um, would you be, um, open to, to a condition, if it's okay with my colleagues, um, to, to, condition to have the basement square footage to be used as not any living space?
Would I be open to that?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Like, it'd be storage or whatever, but it won't be any usable livable space.
Correct, you, you can't, you have to almost crawl around in it.
Okay, I, I think this, um, it, it makes sense, and even though it's a little bit of a, an ask, some of the relief, I think it can be granted, um, so, I wish you the best of luck, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van. Dennis?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman, um, I just want to make a few comments here, I don't know if there's any questions, but I'm just amazed at how much you're fitting on this lot, and, uh, it's a well-maintained property, you do a nice job with it, and, um, filling in these small pieces just basically, uh, maintains the impact it already has.
Correct.
It doesn't really change its, its, um, appearance from the street or even its, its overall footprint, really, other than the void that's being filled in, so...
Correct.
I see this as a pretty simple, um, exercise here, that the impact is negligible, really, as far as what you're asking for, I think that Van's point, though, with, um, making sure that the 4'11", I think that's all it says on the plan.
Yeah, I thought it was, it says 5'6" here.
But, but I think you have, on the side of Joyce, it says 4'11", I think.
Somebody at some time filled it in with concrete, this was clearly...
Yeah.
A dirt basement for a while, and now, you know, whoever did it, it's different heights all over the place.
So, just the idea that you wouldn't be able to dig that out?
No.
And make that habitable space, we're gonna maintain that as, uh, secondary storage or crawl space, if you will.
Understood.
Okay, yeah, I think that's a great, great condition to have, but I, I think you've done a ma, a, a, a great job, and I, and I'm really impressed by what you're trying to do here, so, you're really trying to take this to the next level, and it's, uh, it's a, it's, it's a nice thing to, to have a citizen do for a property in law, because it's really taking it beyond what it, to, to just wrap it up to the maximum you can get for potential here, it's good to see.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Sean?
Uh, thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman, I agree with, uh, my fellow board members, uh, this, this seems like a very good use of restructuring of the property, uh, as long as the basement's not gonna be used for any form of livable space, which, I mean, yeah, even though 5A, even, it's very small, I mean, you never know what's, you never know sometimes in these, uh, these instances with these things, so, um, as long as they're in agreement with the condition of the basement not be used as livable space, uh, I could be, I'm in agreement with the proposed, uh, with granting of variance, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sean, yeah, I, I also agree with my colleagues, I, I appreciate you bringing that insight on that basement for the FAR, uh, to our attention, which allows us to kind of wash that out, um, your plans of, you know, you're very well-prepared, and, you know...
Thank you.
That's what we're looking for in front here, so, as Dennis mentioned, it, you, you're doing a lot over there, and, and, you know...
Yeah.
Congratulations to, to what you, what you've taken on and, uh, what you're looking to do there, so, I'm in favor, and any other comments or concerns?
I'd just like to echo, the application is extremely well, uh, developed and thorough, and I'd really thank you for the depth that you brought the application to, nice job.
You're welcome.
We really appreciate preparedness, um, it, it makes it a lot, uh, more feasible and probable to move forward, and helpful with the DPD, and especially for us on the board, as, as we review things, we like to do things once, and the duplication of efforts for everyone is lengthy. Any other comments or concerns? That being said, and like a motion, please? Any other comments or concerns? That being said, like a motion, please?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2020-5 for 18 Morton Street for variance under Section 5.1 to exceed maximum FAR to construct a 256 square foot addition to a single existing family home, with the condition that the basement may not be used as livable space.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
A roll call.
Chairman Perrin.
Approval of condition.
Member Peck.
Approval of conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approval of condition.
Member McCarthy.
Approval of conditions.
So, you've been, you're unanimously approved. We wish you the best of luck. Thanks for coming in this evening.
Have a good night.
Good night. Moving on to ZB 2020-6 for special permit. The applicant is Tom Jaminski, and I apologize if I'm incorrect. At 75 Technology Drive, Section 6.3.4, Sign Design is seeking special permit approval on behalf of Microchip to replace an existing internally illuminated sign with a new internally illuminated sign at 75 Technology Drive. The new sign will be approximately 61 square feet. The property is on the Office Research Park OP Zoning District. 75 Technology Drive requires special permit approval under Section 6.3.4, and for any other relief required on the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Scott Clement from Sign Design. I'm here on Tom's behalf. He couldn't make it tonight. Sign Design is seeking a special permit approval on behalf of Microchip to replace an existing internally illuminated sign with a new internally illuminated sign at 75 Technology Drive.
Thank you. So, we can move forward with the open public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open up to the board. Van?
Um, this is pretty straightforward to me, Mr. Chairman. It's just, you know, updates and upgrades and, you know, so I have no real concerns. I assume LED lighting-
Correct.
And all that, sir, and-
That's correct.
And usually, I think, with all the signs, the hours of illumination seem to be pretty consistent with the lot or with that area, and usually, you know, an hour before sunset and an hour after sunset, so that's usually the parameters of the signs and illumination hours and all that.
So, currently, they've stated that they illuminate from 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM, Monday through Friday.
And that's already, that's already the current operating illumination hours of the sign?
That's the current operation, correct.
I'll listen to my fellow colleagues, but I like the, how we have it streamlined, that the hours of illuminations are an hour before sunset and an hour after sunset for most of the business for all these signs. But overall, I think this makes sense, so I wish you the best of luck. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van. Sean?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Yeah, I didn't really have any other questions or concerns on this. I mean, if you're in agreement with the, I guess, I think Van brought up the condition, normally, we say one hour before sun, illumination, one hour before sunset to one hour after sun, one hour before sunrise to one hour after sunset or closing, whichever comes later, right? That's usually the, what we use your condition on for the illumination. If that's something that would be agreeable, then, you know, otherwise, pretty much all said, so.
So, yeah, an hour before sunset and then until-
An hour before sunrise to an hour-
Oh, yes.
After sunset or closing, whichever comes later.
Right, so it sounds like they're already adhering, because they shut it off at 11:00 PM.
Yeah, so it'd be, yeah. Would have to be an hour after that, so midnight. Midnight. If they close at 11:00 PM-
No, they shut the sign off at 11:00 PM.
Yeah, well, 11:00 PM, or an hour after 11:00 PM.
When do they close?
They are, their hours of operation are 4:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Okay. So, the reason for the condition is to ensure that lights aren't left on 24 hours a day.
Oh, I see.
So, we grant relief for an hour prior to sunrise and an hour after sunset.
Okay.
Or if the closing is later than sunset, it's an hour after closing, because the sun does change.
Okay.
But, yeah, but as long as that's a condition, it's agreeable, then, you know.
Correct.
Yeah, well, thanks.
Thank you, Sean. Dennis?
Uh, nice job with the application, nice thorough package, and it looks like the graphics are a bit improved over what was there before, so that's a nice thing to see. And, you know, you fit well within the hours of operation, and you're already in a business park anyway, so I think it all makes perfect sense. Are we making a condition also to eliminate this idea of any changes in the future to the sign, Sean, like we did on the previous application?
Yeah, so, would the, like the previous application, I just, I did notice we have the same situation about we're going to have to vacate the prior condition, so.
So, we won't have this condition coming back to us again. Nice job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, we have the conditions for the illumination, and then we have a condition to elimination of further conditions. Are you acceptable to those, sir?
Yes, yes.
That being said, may I have a motion?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2020-6 for 75 Technology Drive for special permit under Section 6.3.4 to replace existing internally illuminated sign with a new internally illuminated sign, with the condition that the illumination would be one hour before, on one hour before sunset to one hour after sun, excuse me, one hour before sunrise to one hour after sunset or closing, whichever comes later. And also, the second condition is to vacate the previous condition where approvals must, all approvals for change of signage must come before the board.
May I have a second? I have a roll call.
Chairman Perrin.
Approval of conditions.
Member Peck.
Approval of conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approval of conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approval of conditions.
Best of luck, sir. We appreciate your time and your application. Moving forward under other business, we have a minor modification at 462, 466 Bridge Street. Property owners seek an amendment to a special permit and variance decisions issued by the Zoning Board of Appeals on 12/8/2009, with an amendment on 7/7/2015 for a total of 11 residential units and one commercial unit. The applicant is seeking an amendment because the property has 12 residential units and one commercial unit, and has operated such since its purchase. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Plunkett represents the applicant Lee Properties LLC, the owners of the subject matter before you here tonight. With me here tonight are two of the principals, Mr. Jonathan Lee and Mr. Joshua Lee. The Lees bought the property back in 2015. The history of this site is that in 2009, there was a fire. The owner at that time obtained from the ZBA variance and special permit to bring it back to its use. And at that time, it was the third floor that suffered the fire. Third floor, second floor, same layout, five units, one one-bedroom, four studios, and then you had the first floor. The first go-through with the board was it indicated 10 units, referring clearly to the second and third floor, and then say, "Commercial." There's a commercial space on the first floor, but it does not take up all the space. And this is an older building, so this is a situation that the layout is pretty much, you know, how many years it goes back, I don't know for certain, but it certainly goes back a number, number of years, because it's one of the older buildings, you know, it's one of the classic buildings on Bridge Street. So, in 2015, they came back to the board because of the fact that they didn't reference the fact that there was residential and commercial on the first floor, and they referred to it as then 11 residential spaces, referring to the 10 on, five and five on, you know, floors two and three, and the residential space and commercial space on floor one. When the Lees were going to sell the property, and since they've owned it, they've maintained it as 12 residential units, because on that first floor, it's two, you know, two studios units is the residential use, and then again, the four-studio, one-one-bedroom, four-studio, one-one-bedroom on the second and third floor. And it was then brought to the attention that, well, wait a second, you say, it says 11, and you've got 12. So, we're here before the board today to bring up the fact that it's been 12 residential units, five, five, and two, on the, you know, first floor, two residential, one commercial, five second, five third, since they bought it. They have all the permits, they have, you know, fire escape, smoke detectors, you know, clearance for the residential units. This annual, they got the re-upped on the building for residential use in 2017, again referring to 17, to 12 residential units. And in the nature of this use, also, I think, very important, having listened to the concern about parking, is that this actually has parking space behind it. 10 spaces, and in the narrative, we indicate, you know, what the typical use of those 10 spaces is, that, you know, the usage at that site, the studio apartment use is a very critical, you know, housing need in the city, and very often, that does not come associated with car usage. So, right now, there's of the usage, there's only three tenants that are making use of the, of the parking in the back. But you have situation, because you have, right now, there's two Section 8 tenants there. There are two tenants that have these, you know, the needs that are addressed by, what's the organization? It's the Elliott Community Human Services, that they pick them up and drive them to their daily activities and things of that sort. So, this meets an actual critical housing need in the city, and it has the unique factor that when people come in that need, that do have cars, you've got a 10-space park in the area, you know, it's lined, it's maintained, and if you drive by the property, you see that, you know, they do take very good care of their properties. They're very proud of the properties that they own, and it's something that is not, you know, unfortunately, you drive through, and there are some structures that aren't maintained properly, that don't meet the needs of the city and the community. So, this is a situation where we're looking at, you know, it's been here twice before, but clearly, there were mistakes, you know, or clearly, there wasn't, you know, an accurate depiction to be reflected on what's of record. And bottom line is, that's what we're coming to the board tonight, to tell you how this property is structured, how it's run, how it's been utilized since they have purchased the property, and now, we're looking to further mend, just to clarify what makes sense as to the usage there. The first floor, that commercial space, only takes out about half of that floor area. So, you've got five, five, and then half of it for commercial space on the first floor, and two, you know, two studio apartments on the first floor. And just as a point of how, you know, the Lees operate, when this came to mind, one of the units on the first floor became vacant, and they determined they would, you know, they did not seek to fill that space until they came back to the board to get a determination, to be able to say how they operate their business, and look to the board for validation as to the usage of the building that's compatible to the use that we believe has gone on for many, many years, and certainly, it's been ongoing since they have purchased it in 2015.
Thank you very much, counsel. I appreciate the, this does go back to '09 and 2015, so I do appreciate the historical narrative. It gives us a better understanding, and thank you to the property owners for having the foresight not to fill that unit in good faith and prior to coming in tonight. So, this is a minor modification. Do I need to have a public hearing on this? Not at all. I can open it up to the board. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Just trying to understand the history here. So, back in 15, we understood the building to be accepted as 10 units, and it was supposed to be 11 units, so we said it's minor modification, said you can have 11 units.
Correct. Going back to 2009, the initial variance special permit said 10, and 10 residential and one commercial. Again, the 10, clearly, the second and third floor, the layout is exactly the same. One one-bedroom on each floor, four studios for the total of the 10 units, and on the first floor, you have the commercial with residential use, and that's, you know, and again, they're saying that clearly, you can see that this commercial space is not a recent build-out. This is, the commercial space has probably been utilized as a neighborhood store for many, many years. So, then going back, yes, to 2015, they came back and said, "Oh, you know, we didn't capture the residential space on the first floor," and they referred to it as a residential, you know, they added one, but we're saying it wasn't one, it was two. It was a residential use on the first floor with the commercial use, but that residential use is two studio units, not a large, it's not a large apartment on the first floor to go with the commercial space.
If I'm on the board in another three or four years and you come back again, I'm going to be very upset if you don't bring plans with you, because we should have seen plans in '09, we should have seen plans in 15, we should see plans today that tell us what you're doing in that building, as far as the size of the units, where the units are, and what you're talking about, all right? And now, we're approving something again tonight, which I think we'll probably end up doing, but we have no plans that say, "This is a 300 square foot unit, this is a 450 square foot unit, this is the commercial unit." We don't have any plans to say how this thing's laid out. They must exist somewhere, because you probably went for permits, right? I just wish this application came to us with plans.
Yeah.
So, we'd see in a document what you're talking about, so if it ever comes up again, we'll understand how it changed.
All right.
Because buildings don't grow. I mean, you didn't increase the square footage. All I can think of is that you subdivided one of the units from, you know, a large unit to a smaller unit, made too small, I don't know. I'm going by conjecture here, but I wish I saw plans and a history to document what actually took place. If it's a mistake that we just miscounted, that's fine, too, but it's hard to believe that it's just a mistake.
In the, and I understand, you know, in the narrative, we tried to give a description in terms of the 300 square foot to 450 square foot studios and one-bedroom apartments, and that the second and third floors are identical layouts with the four and one on each of those floors for studio and one-bedroom.
Again, the narrative does help, but without seeing a plan that understands how circulation works and where the mechanical spaces are, and making sure that we have everything accounted for, and we have commercial spaces that are a certain size, I'm, 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 I don't, I'm kind of just doing what we did in 2009 and 2015 again.
Okay.
Right? Anyway. I don't see a big deal. I think that you're right about the parking. Do we need any kind of variance for the parking? Oh?
This is what's tricky, why they came in under a minor modification. I've reviewed the 20, 2009 decision, the written decision, and the 2015 decision, and the unit count varies within each decision, so I do think it sounds, the building did not grow, but I do think this might have been an error, because when we go back, they've had 12 health rental inspections, in addition to the commercial inspection, dating back to before, around 2009.
I feel better about it, Kristina.
Yes, so it's not, because this actually came up about a couple of months ago, where we had a public records request, and the building files and the zoning files did not match at all, and so zoning took precedent, and that's why he's here asking, because the, if the, if I remember correctly, so feel free to interrupt me, Attorney Plunkett, the 200- If I remember correctly, so feel free to interrupt me, Attorney Plunkett, the 2015 amendment was to correct a mistake in the 2009. And so I think we will write this up to make it very clear that what the legal use is so that in three, five, 10 years, they can't... Oh, there was three. It won't be... They'd have to do a full petition to make any additional changes.
I feel better. Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Dennis. Shaun?
Thank you for the clarification, Christine, because I was getting very skeptical, Attorney Plunkett. I mean, with the way following... And I appreciate the history, going through it and everything, but I was getting a little skeptical following why, you know, it started with 10, and now we're at 11, now we're at 12. And my first question was going to be, and I noticed that your client wasn't the petitioner of the last... I mean, he purchased in 2015, right?
They purchased in December of 2015.
So that was after the last...
After, I think it was July of 15 that the last matter was before the...
Okay. So my first question was going to be, had your client done any construction or any renovation of the property, and additional units were added, and then all of a sudden, I mean, I'm sure the answer was going to be was no. I mean, that's fine. I mean, I certainly get that. But now that Christine's clarified that, you know, it's been a 12-unit property all the time, I mean, and, you know, I'm a little more... I feel a little bit more comfortable.
And we can understand the question, believe me. And again, that, I think, was part of the rationale behind the Lees saying, look, until we get this cleared up, this remains vacant.
Yeah, no.
And so we can understand and appreciate where your question is coming from.
Yeah, and again, I was going to say in mitigation, I appreciate the fact that that unit has remained vacant, you know, till this is cleared up, which is, again, a plus on that. So that being said, I'm comfortable now agreeing to the minor modification, and so I'll just leave it at that. So thank you.
Thank you, Shaun. Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. McCall, for that clarification of this site. You know, I think this is a minor modification or minor update. I think the petitioner, the applicant, Mr. Plunkett and Mr. Lee, Mr. Lee, you're trying to rectify a clerical error. You know, you're trying to do the right thing. You know, I don't think you guys are trying to, you know... 2009 was, you know, a property with 10 units, and 2015, you tried to bump it up to 11, and now you're trying to bump it to 12. I mean, I don't believe in that, but I do understand the concerns of my colleagues. But like I said, you know, in your narrative, Mr. Plunkett, you know, Mr. Lee, I think out of concern, didn't even, like you said, offer the vacant unit because he wanted to be within the guidelines of, you know, the units, but he thought maybe it's 11 or 10, you know. I think this is a good kind of rectifying of a clerical error, and I think moving forward, we'll have more detailed plans that this is the unit is supposed to be at. So overall, I think this is a minor modification, just a clerical error. So I wish you and Mr. Lee, Mr. Lee, the best of luck. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van. So certainly, we... Once again, we're appreciative of our DPD department bringing this issue to light. This vote will then move us in line with correcting the clerical error, understanding the narrative. Is there a need for an administrative review on this, or can we just take the vote and place it on the record and move on?
I think we can just place it on the record. We'll write something up.
Okay.
That... So there should be no confusion in the future.
So this won't... We won't be following this petition in the future?
No.
Fair enough.
You won't see us here before you again.
Well, with all due respect, we hope we do when they're building additional buildings and they're growing their business. And you're always welcome in the chambers, Counsel.
I mean, on this particular case, I should have clarified that.
With that being said, may I have a motion? Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'm sorry, what's the doc? I don't have a document on this.
We just need a vote that yes or no, it's a minor mod, and then just place it.
Actually, I do have it. Okay, I do have a case. We have the prior decision. All right, I read it. ZB 2009-47 for approval of a minor modification with the finding no substantial material change and to accept the modification to amend the previous release stated to read twelve residential units.
I have a second.
I have a second motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a roll call.
Chairman Perrin?
Approved minor modification.
Member Peck?
Approved minor modification.
Member Callahan?
Approved minor modification.
Member McCarthy?
Approved minor modification.
Counsel, your modification has been approved.
Thank you very much.
Petition has been placed on the record. Gentlemen, continued success with your growing business and property.
Thank you.
Thank you. Make the move forward in other business. We have our annual election officers. That being said, I'd like to make a nomination for Mr. Shaun Callahan as clerk for 2020. May I have a second?
Second motion.
We have a roll call.
Chairman Perrin?
Approved nomination.
Member Peck?
Approved nomination.
Member Callahan?
Approved nomination.
Member McCarthy?
Approved nomination.
We have other annual election officers. I'd like to make a nomination for Mr. Van Peck for vice chairman for 2020. May I have a second?
Second.
We have a roll call.
Chairman Perrin?
Approved nomination.
Member Peck?
Approved nomination.
Member Callahan?
Approved nomination.
Member McCarthy?
Approved nomination.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a nomination of Mr. Garrett Perrin as chairman of the board.
A second?
Can I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin?
Approved nomination.
Member Peck?
Approved nomination.
Member Callahan?
Approved nomination.
Member McCarthy?
Approved nomination.
Congratulations for the annual elections to all who greatly served this board. I do want to take this brief opportunity to... On behalf of myself, I do want to thank all the members of this board, Mr. McCarthy, Mr. Brier, Mr. Jumina, and all previous members for their due diligence and time and effort that they put in all these petitions, for the citizens of this great city, working with DPD. It's been... It's a privilege to serve with you and to continue to serve, and the confidence we have in one another and our department, I think, has boded very well and positive for us over the last several years, and I'm proud to be part of it. I'd like to move forward under minutes for approval. We have minutes for December 9, 2019. We have any review edits or concerns? I do know there was one edit, which was accepted, to my knowledge. Or was it... Strike that. Strike that. There was not. I was reading it. I was reviewing another email in my head, so any... No, no. I was thinking of the previous one. He had some... May I have an acceptance of the meeting?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes for December 9, 2019.
May I have a second?
Second.
A roll call.
Chairman Perrin?
Accept the minutes for 12/9/19.
Member Peck?
Accept the minutes.
Member Callahan?
Accept minutes for December 9, 2019.
Member McCarthy?
Accept the minutes.
Final, any comments or concerns of the board?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, sir, I just wanted to echo some of the sentiments you said, sir. It's been a very privilege and honor to serve with all the past members of the zoning board and current members. I've learned a lot over the years with you, Mr. Chairman, with Mr. McCarthy and Mr. Callahan and Mr. Brier and all the past members. So it's really been an honor and privilege to serve, and I thank you to you, Mr. Chairman, and to Mr. Callahan, and to Mr. McCarthy for your continued support. You know, I really enjoy the role that I serve on the board, and I continue to learn all the time, you know, from you, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. McCarthy, Mr. Callahan, and so I look forward to working with you and with DPD, the great team and staff, to serve the city and to, you know, to work better, to improve things for the city of Lowell as a whole. So I just... I wanted to echo those comments, you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Any other comments? I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion to adjourn. Meeting is adjourned.